Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the February 28th, 2023 meeting of the Hayden City Council. May I have a roll call of council members, please? Abby?
Council President Roder.
Yes.
Councilmember DePries.
Here.
Councilmember Satterfield.
Yes.
And Councilmember White.
Yes.
I'd like to ask Council President Matt Roder to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, I have two corrections, and members of council, I have what I believe are two corrections tonight. Are Tom and Terry Stone with us this evening? Tom does not appear, so in that case, we are going to scratch item number 6A from our council meeting tonight. And regarding item 1G, 1G is the approval of the contract for the construction of the boat dock. I have a memo I would like to read you. The proposed contract completion date has been changed from June 30th, 2023, pardon me, has been changed to June 30th, 2023, instead of May 31st, 2023, to allow the contractor proper time to complete the work. Essentially, it is an extra month. Wanted to let you all know that. Ladies and gentlemen, the City of Coeur d'Alene does business.
Hayden.
Where are you? I'm sorry.
Hayden.
Did I say that?
For the record.
That from the record. The City of Hayden does business five days a week, but there are some things that the city does that require the approval or the consent, if you will, of city council. If you have a case with you tonight or an agenda, I would like to read those items on the consent calendar for this evening. Item 1A, approval of the August 16, 2022 city council meeting minutes. 1B, the approval of February 8, 2023 special city council meeting minutes. 1C, the approval of February 14, 2023 special city council meeting minutes. 1D, approval of February 14, 2023 city council meeting minutes. 1E, the approval of the agreement for possession with RAD Properties LLC for the Ramsey Road Extension Project. 1F, the approval of Fred &amp; Sue Ann Land Development Company, Inc., administrative settlement for the Ramsey Road Extension Project. 1G, the approval of the contract with Stan Craft Marine Construction for Cootin County Sheriff's Office Boat Dock at Honeysuckle Beach. 1H, the acceptance of infrastructure for Gales Glen subdivision. And 1I, approval for the bills of payment. Council members, are there any questions or comments regarding the consent calendar? Hearing none, I would appreciate a motion from council on the disposition of this.
Okay, I'll motion approve consent calendar.
Second, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Is there any further discussion from members of council? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, Abby.
Councilmember Satterfield.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Council President Roder.
Yes.
And Councilmember DePries.
Yes.
Motion passes. For the second item of our meeting tonight, we have visitor and public comment. If you do have a comment that you would like to make to the council, I'd appreciate if you would fill out a speaker's card at the back and bring it forward. I have one card, and that is from Mr. Michael Kep. Mr. Kep, please step forward to the podium there. If you would state your name, please, and whether or not you are a citizen of Hayden.
Well, I am a citizen of Coeur d'Alene. Is that going to be a problem?
No, sir, it's not.
I apparently don't.
Just for the record. Thank you.
My name is Michael Kep, and I am here tonight to let the council know that we've been in talks and putting together a contract with the City of Hayden to take over Chris Gugumos's legacy of Handshake Productions and his summer concert series, which we are now naming Kep Concerts. And so it's just recently fallen into my lap through a couple of prominent businessmen in Coeur d'Alene, and then through his family, asking my family to take it over. So we've begun. We just started working on sponsorships this last month, and wanted to introduce myself and let you know that that was our intention and our plan, and that a contract should be coming across your desks here relatively soon.
Excellent. All right. Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public that would like to make a comment tonight? Hearing none, going to move on to our next item, which is the commission report. Tonight, we are pleased to have Mr. Stephen Gazokas from the Veterans Commission give us a status update on the Veterans Commission. Welcome, and thank you for volunteering for this this evening.
Yes, and I'm on the border of the two towns, so I don't know which side I want to resist on, but I love Hayden, and it's honestly a pleasure, as it's been for the seven years I've been on the commission. Good evening, everyone. Mayor Porcell, city council members and staff, and ladies and gentlemen. My name is Stephen Gazokas, and I am the recently elected chair for the Veterans Commission in here in Hayden, and it is my distinct privilege to report the past year's commission activities, our donations into the veterans community, and the other associated activities that we do as a commission. Also to announce this year's plan of support, conduct of events, and the plans for a fundraiser, of which I've given a copy to all of the commissioners and on the council, I should say, on the council. The events that we conducted in 2022 were the Memorial Day wreath laying ceremony in Hayden Lake, Honeysuckle Beach, and at the same time, the same day, in November, I should say, in May, we did McIntyre Park for the Memorial Day Remembrance Ceremony, and the Veterans Day Ceremony here also in McIntyre Family Park. And those events were well attended. I can tell you there were, in most cases, about 200 people there, and those were people in the community that we are so proud to serve. Donations that we submitted last year were to the North Idaho Veterans Assistance League for the completion of the veterans home in Post Falls. And I can tell you, and I can report to you today, that the first people going into that facility as patients went in this past week. So that's an achievement that's been, that has happened, and I should like to let you know that. Also, the second donation was to New Beginnings in North Idaho, and I'd just like to say a few words, as I am the veteran service officer for them. They do a purely outstanding job, and the founder of that organization, who is Mrs. Hart, is a Gold Star Mother. And I want you to know that she takes what she does very seriously. She's in the community all the time, and has the most open hand to all veterans of all sorts and situations. And we have a lot of those as VSO, I can tell you. And then finally, we donated to the American Legion Post in Rathdrum, 154, $200 for their commemorative dinner to all veterans. In this year, we're looking at Memorial Day ceremonies, which are concluded with the help of our very capable Suzie Cano, who is in fact our recreation and community events, in case you don't know her, director. We're very proud of her, and her service, I could just say at the end of this, as having been on this commission since 2017 myself, has been stellar. If I got to write her fitness evaluation, it would say purely superior performance. And don't get too red in the face, Suzie, we're so proud of you. And on account of her and Kristin Striker and Jennifer Arata, because of those people, we have a smooth-running organization, and I'm so proud to be a part of it because of them, how we protect ourselves and the community. It's really great to do those things. But getting back to what I was really talking about, Memorial Day events, we have Lieutenant Colonel Smee, U.S. Army retired, as well as elements of the color guard for the Air Force Base in, at, trying to remember the name of the thing. I'm a Navy guy, so you have to understand I don't really worry about the Air Force very much. To make a long story short, at Fairchild, and all the pieces of the program with Suzie's help and some of the commission members' help are really in place for what's going to take place in May, and we're very proud of that, plus the elements that we need for the wreath-laying ceremony as well. So we're well on tap for that. As usual, we'd like to forward and to ask Mayor Porcell, as well as all the council members and members of the staff for City Hall, to attend the ceremonies if we can. We really love having you there. It makes us feel really good when you're able to be there. And today, as Mayor Porcell will in fact, at that time, introduce the attendees, Council President Roder will read the new names on all of the newly-installed pavers, and as I said, you're in all invited to come. As I say, the event is somewhere between 200 and 300 on a good day, and when it's a little bit rainy or it's cold, maybe 150. But we're so proud of that. And so finally, and the last thing I want to talk about, is the commission established a fundraiser, which I've given a copy of the item we're going to raffle, and without going into a lot of detail, since I am no gun expert, I can say that this is a very worthy, as I say, a very worthy piece for any of the, anyone who is a gun enthusiast. I've given the council, and this will be also passed out in the community, a flyer about what's on that. And we have a member from the Marine Corps League who has now joined our commission, who is going to run the raffle, put it all together, and our next meeting on Thursday, of all things, is going to be putting the piece of this together so that we have a smooth-running raffle, and that we're able to do as successful as the Marine Corps did when they did theirs. So I think they made something like $4,000 in the raffle that they ran, I think it was about a year ago. So basically, that's my report, and it's an honor to be here tonight. I'd like to do it again sometime, when I'm a little less nervous. But at any rate, all of you, and I've seen for a long time many of you since I joined the commission in 2017, I'm just so honored to be involved with you. I love the City of Hayden. I wish it moved the line on the other side of prairies so that I could be in the community and not feel better. But other than that, thank you so much. Are there any questions?
Mr. Gazokas, please pass along to the other members of the commission how proud we as a city are for the work that you do. I am unaware of another volunteer commission in our, not just our city, but in our area, that is more productive and more energetic than the Veterans Commission. Thank you very much for everything you do for our city.
You're very welcome, and I'd like to say it's a reflection of leadership. Thank you very much.
And we're very proud to have Suzie, too. That's, thank you.
One question before you go. Where can we obtain tickets to buy the?
Those are being worked, and we're going to have tickets unavailable when the general announcement is made. We're still in the formulation stage, Mr. Roder, and that should be either at this meeting or in the April meeting. We should have all of that information out, and we would love to have that participation. I don't even know what tickets will be char, you know, the tickets for raffle will be. I'm thinking it's going to be like 20, I should say, $20 for five tickets, or something like that. I don't know yet. But that's going to be worked on by our commission on, wouldn't you know, Thursday. If you want to actually see the firearm, we're going to have it at our meeting at 4:00 on Thursday, if you're really interested.
Perhaps, perhaps when you get the details of the raffle worked out, if you could let Suzie know about it, and we'll ask her to make an announcement at a future council meeting.
Yes, sir. Will do to that.
Thank you.
Again, it's a pleasure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Our next item of business tonight is, we have two public hearings. The first public hearing is item PZE-23-0009, the vacation of the flame and cork platt. This takes a public hearing, ladies and gentlemen, and I would like to briefly lay out the procedures that we follow for a public hearing. First of all, the staff will identify and introduce the subject case. The applicant will have an opportunity to present their case, not to exceed 15 minutes. The staff will present a summary of the staff report, will at that point have an opportunity for public comment, and an applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal. At that point, I will close the hearing, and we will begin council deliberations. Donna, why don't you? Oh, thank you very much for reminding me of that. If any of you here tonight would like to provide public comment on either of our two hearings that we have tonight, I would appreciate it if you would fill out a form. There you go, and we will, we will make a note of it in the record. Thank you very much.
Good evening. So, a vacation of a platt. Kind of a new one. The surveyor that requested this or worked with this, we've been working with Rod Jones from Cootin County, because vacations of platts don't generally come anywhere. You generally finish a platt, you're done and moving on. And so we have to follow Idaho code, and so that's why in your memo you see me quoting Idaho statutes and the nines and items you have to look at when you're deciding on whether or not you're going to vacate a platt. So I just want to kind of give you a heads up of where we got here, and then I'll turn it over to the owner of the property that can explain the narrative a little bit, and then go from there. So just as a, let's see on where we're talking about. These are the baseball diamonds of City Hall, so this is Honeysuckle, and this is Government Way. And the flame and cork platt took these three lots, lots four, five, and six, of the Merritt Brothers first edition subdivision, and replatted the three lots into these two lots that exist today. So they took three lots that had been platted previously, and they replatted them as two lots. The reasoning behind that, just as a matter of background, is this joint access easement and utility easement that went between those two lots. Effectively, you can't build a building over the top of an easement, and that particular easement doesn't house any utilities. None of the dry utilities and none of the wet utilities, and so it didn't make sense to leave it there. But you can't vacate an easement that's on a platt, because there's no document to vacate against. And so the only way to vacate that is through a replatt. So I'll leave it at that, and introduce John Young, and he can pick it up from here, and then I'll give you the rest of the summary of the staff review.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Thank you, Donna, fellow citizens. I'm John Young. My wife and I own 8592 North Government Way LLC and JNC Investments LLC, which are the two owners of the properties involved. And basically, like Donna said, what we were trying to do is we were trying to vacate that access easement on the center of the lots. It was a busy period of time for me. I was tied up with a lot of different other business things, and as I was working with Chad Johnson, a Johnson surveying who does lots of projects with us, he and I got a little bit disconnected on what our goal was here. And so instead of creating three parcels, when we did the replatt, it ended up being two parcels. And by adding a parcel to the one where the existing flame and cork is at now, because of the underlying financing, it puts me in a position where I could not go ahead and finance improvements on the properties to the north. So we've asked, Chad did the work, like Donna said, with the county, and also researched with the state, and found out that there is a mechanism to vacate the platt. This would basically put it back the way it was a year ago, and a year and about $12,000 ago, to be honest. So mistake for not spending, paying as much detail, attention to detail as I should have on this. So we appreciate your consideration of our request to vacate the replatt. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Just to continue with the memo, we had been working toward a boundary line adjustment, thinking that we were going to, that they were going to get a vacation of the easements through a vacation with the utility providers, and then a boundary line adjustment would effectively get where they wanted to go. So we had been originally looking at Lot 5 and Lot 6, and that that platt of flame and cork had been platted according to kind of what we had originally looked like, that these two lots would have become this lot and this lot. But obviously, Lot 4 got kind of mixed into the middle of that conversation. So Idaho State Statute 501306A talks about vacation of platts, and it kind of gives you a process to follow. So was a request received, yes. Notice of public hearing included certified mail to property owners within 300 feet. Legal notice was published twice in the Coeur d'Alene press. The property was posted. Public service announcements went out to various media outlets, as well as posted on the city's website, and public comments are in the staff review, beginning on page 5. Number 3 says that when the procedures set forth herein have been fulfilled, the city council may grant the request to vacate with such restrictions as they deem necessary in the public's interest. Number 4 says that if the request to vacate is brought before county commissioners, which in this case it is not, easements granted for gas, sewer, water, telephone, cable, power drainage, and slope. So all of the agency notices were sent to the affected agencies as part of the noticing. Again, see those comments beginning on page 5. When public streets are located within the boundary of a highway district, so that's not applicable here, all publication costs shall be at the expense of the petitioner, and they have been. Public highway agencies acquiring real property is not applicable here, and land exclusive of public right-of-way that has been subdivided in accordance with this chapter need not be vacated in order to be replatted. So that's not applicable either. So recapping those public agency and public comments, there were 13 agencies that were noticed. Northern Lakes Fire Protection District provided comments related to future development and future review by the fire district. United States Postal Service provided comments with respect to locations and types of post office boxes, and the Coeur d'Alene Airport responded with no comment. Public comments were received from those that had been noticed and who may have seen the notice either through the legal or through the property posting. Beverly Davis was neutral, and 8592 North Government Way, Bolson Investments, and JNC Investments, all were in support. All of their comments are part of your memo. And after the time that the memo was submitted to Board Book, we received a fourth one in support from Cory Trapp Ocean Pond with the box marked "support." So there were no additional comments, just boxes that were checked. So based on those nine standards that are identified in Idaho State Code, or points that you have to kind of look through, the city council may either approve or deny the request for PZE-230009, vacation of the flame and cork estate platt.
Thank you, Donna.
Is there a slide you'd like me to leave up for public comment, if there is any?
Council members, if they have a slide they'd like to particularly see.
Probably a platt, I mean.
Sandra?
Yeah, I'd like to see the slide that says, "Who gave public comment?" Yeah, that one. Now, a couple of them don't have names.
Those are the names of the companies that own that property.
Okay, so we don't know the personal name of the person.
It's the company name that owns the property.
Okay.
It's what the property ownership's name is.
We might as well leave that one up.
Do you have that or the one with the platt?
Or the one with the platt, sure.
Yeah.
There you go. Thank you. Before I begin the public comment period, Mr. Gazokas, I spoke with you before the meeting tonight, and I know that you have another, another meeting to attend to, and if you need to leave, we certainly understand that, and thank you for coming tonight.
I was interested in that. I wanted to hear what was said, so thank you.
Do you guys have any questions?
Do any, any other staff, pardon me, any other council members at this point have questions of staff? Okay, thank you, Donna. At this point, we have received no information regarding public comment on this, so I am not going to go through our criteria for public comment, if we have none. And since we have no public comment, I'm going to assume that we have no applicant rebuttal to the comment. And at this point, at 5:32, I'm closing the public hearing, and we now have council deliberations. Council, comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I guess.
Councilmember DePries.
Hearing none, I guess I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve PZE-23-0009, vacation of flame and cork platt.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Does any member of council have any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Council President Roder.
Yes.
Councilmember Satterfield.
Yes.
And Councilmember DePries.
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you very much for coming tonight. The second public hearing we have tonight, ladies and gentlemen, is for PZE-23-002, a zone text amendment to the standards of a zone map text amendment, and also formatting changes to the existing code format in Title 11. Since I've already explained to folks what our, our hearing procedures are, I won't go over that again. Oh, thank you. I'm informed these are a little different for a city-initiated. Let me explain to you. First of all, staff will present the situation. Council will ask staff questions. The public then will be called on to comment. The council can ask the public questions. The hearing will be closed, and the council will deliberate with the motion following. Thank you, Abby. Donna, go ahead.
So we've workshopped this several times, but just kind of as a recap for those in the audience. Whenever you do a zone text amendment, or a zone map amendment, either one, you also, you have Idaho State statutes you have to follow, and you have city codes you have to follow. So Idaho State Statute 676511 for zoning ordinance says that requests shall be reviewed and evaluated by the Planning and Zoning Commission, which this one has. Particular consideration shall be given to the effects of the change upon the delivery of services by any political subdivision providing public services, including school districts within the planning jurisdiction, and an amendment may be subject to the regulatory taking analysis found in 6780003. Hayden City Code today has four standards of approval, that any zone text amendment has to meet those standards of approval. First one is, is that the commission shall consider if the existing zone district or regulations, and they may recommend approval, conditional approval, modification, or denial of proposal. The commission may defer action until completion of such studies or plans as may be necessary. The city council may impose conditions upon rezoning to ensure that proposed uses of the area are consistent with the community needs and its public health, safety, and general welfare. And the Planning and Zoning Commission may recommend conditions upon rezoning. Amendments to the zone map and zone text shall be in accordance with the future land use map and the goals and policies found in the Hayden Conference Plan, and that amendments to zone map and zone text shall align with the zone district's purpose and intent. The zone map, zone code map text amendment, the process and property rights. So the process is considered a quasi-judicial process. The hearing bodies reside in a court-like proceeding. Zoning decisions do not have to conform exactly with the conference of plan, but they do have to be based on findings of fact and conclusions of law. And Idaho Code 676508 mandates that they shall consider previous and existing mandates that they shall consider previous and existing conditions, trends, desirable goals and objectives, or desirable future situations for each planning component. And notices are provided for those affected by the proposed change and have a right to be So the memo before you, and what was noticed, both for Planning and Zoning Commission, and for city council's public hearing, is a proposed text amendment to add a fifth standard of approval for the zone map and zone text amendments, to read that the amendment to the zone map and zone text shall be consistent with the neighborhood contexts. The second portion of the memo talks about the formatting that exists in the notes, or the general note section, and as there is no text that's changing of the actual text of the document, just the formatting, it doesn't require you to go through the standards of approval because you're not changing code. Save code, just formatting it back into the outline of the code. So it's important to note that. So the analysis with respect to the fifth standard of approval is proposed. Standard number one, regarding the requirement for additional studies or plans, staff does not believe that additional studies or plans are necessary regarding this fifth standard proposed. Standard number two, that no additional conditions on the proposed code text amendment are proposed at this point in time. Standard number three, the future land use map is not affected by the proposed code text amendment, and goals and policies were identified on Page 4 of the staff review or Page 8 of memo. Standard number four, the proposed code text amendment does not change zone designations and/or the purpose or the intent of any of those zone designations. And infrastructure would be required for water, sewer, utilities, public infrastructure, et cetera, would be reviewed at the time of any future development, and not a part of this zone text amendment. So notice and comments. In response to the notice to 33 agencies, and the notice sent to the Coeur d'Alene Press, and the city's website and media outlets, the following six comments were received prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing. The Coeur d'Alene Airport, Panhandle Health District, Hayden area Regional Sewer Board, Post Falls Highway District, and Idaho Department of Environmental Quality had no comments. And as part of those agency notices, we received a comment back from Asheran, who believes that the city is overdeveloping the area until improvements are made to the schools, highways, and local roads. So at the conclusion of the Planning and Zoning Commission's public hearing, they recommended to disapprove the zone code text amendment to the standards of approval, and they recommended to approve the formatting changes to 1123 general notes and 1124 notes.
Donna, could I stop you? Could you go back to that slide for just a moment? Eric, I've got a question for you. So tonight, will we be making two motions then, similar to what Planning and Zoning Commission did?
I would do it similarly to what they did.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Donna, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Are these, are the formatting change, that's separate from the text amendment? I mean, it's not, the formatting change are not related to the text amendment?
That's correct. We just noticed them at the same time for transparency.
They're not related to each other?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. So when the memo went to Planning, to city council as part of the council packets, we had not received, I can't say that. We did receive three emails that came to Planning that came in on the 21st. Can honestly say that I am not perfect, and I check the Planning email daily, and I had checked it in the morning, and there weren't any comments that came in. And I checked it again at 6 o'clock, 5:00, 5:00 o'clock, whatever time it was, almost 6 o'clock on the 22nd. I'd already sent the memo to council, so apologize for that. And then, so three of the comments that are part of this were received on the 21st, are attached here. The fourth comment was received by the Planning, yesterday. So it is nearly three pages long.
Thank you.
And the person that wrote it is in the audience, Asheran. Council wants me to read it in entirety, since the council was talking on that same email. The mayor forwarded it to me accordingly.
No need to read it.
Kind of summarize the ones that you have in front of you. Why it's so important that everybody gets their comments in early, so that they can be included in the memos to council. So again, I apologize. So the city did receive four comments in support of the quest for the zone text amendment. Connie Weston, who's a resident, believes it's a good idea to add the zone text amendment to the standards of approval. It's important to consider the consistency of a new development with current neighborhood context. Rights of current owners are just as important as the new development. Susan Edwards, also a resident, identified the vision of Hayden is a city with a small-town feel that does not compromise neighborhood integrity and character, and this amendment will ensure that vision. Joy Richards, resident, she says quite simply, "I believe the totality of the circumstances should be considered in every request before you. Look at the surrounding area as a fact to determine if the project fits." Teresa Roth, who's a property owner, this is, again, I'm summarizing at the very end of her email. She did have some points that she was trying to clarify in her email, but in the very last paragraph, this is kind of a summary of that, that says this change is necessary to balance the rights of existing citizens with those of developers, to promote healthy growth in Hayden, and to regain the trust of citizens and their government. So therefore, the city council may approve, modify, or disapprove the zone code text amendment, and may approve or disapprove the formatting change. If you propose to modify it, I believe it has to come back for a second public hearing. You have questions for me?
Council members, questions?
I have one.
Council President Roder?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is, do we have a definition of neighborhood context? What does that mean to the public or to us? Is it in the code where there's a definition? How do we know what that means?
Might I comment on that? And that's going to be one of my proposed modifications, is that we do, I have an example, but that we do come up with a definition of what we mean by context, and maybe in the notes of that definition, give an example that would be followed, so.
That may be more appropriate for our deliberation, but thank you for bringing it up. I appreciate that. Other questions of Ms. Phillips? Council members? Okay, thank you, Donna.
So, I'm going to leave.
All right, thank you. We now have our opportunity for public comment. I would like to describe to you the parameters in which we are allowing public comment. Commenters must complete a comment form on the back table and specify whether they are in support of, neutral, or opposed to the subject case. Commenters will be called upon in order of those of support, neutral, and those opposed. Commenters will address the council, not the audience. Commenters must state their name and whether or not they are citizens of Hayden, Idaho. And comments are limited to five minutes. I will notify commenters by waving a piece of paper when they have one minute remaining. At this moment, we have one member of the public that would like to make a comment. If anyone else would like to, please take a form at the back and bring it up to me. I'd like to recognize Ms. Teresa Roth. Ms. Roth, could you please state your, state your name and whether or not you're a citizen of Hayden?
Hi, my name is Teresa Roth, and I'm a property owner of Hayden, and the grandmother of five Hayden children. I am gonna read from a script because I am just recovering from laryngitis, so you almost got to miss this. Anyway, I'm writing to encourage you to revote, as you did in December, in favor of this change to the city code to add neighborhood context. I'm not gonna bring up all these old issues. I think we've all been through this many times. It's been, it's been being negotiated for six months. There are serious problems with the existing standards that we've already discussed in terms of the point of view of the residents, because they don't really give the residents a standing to make their objections. And I was very disappointed to see that the Planning and Zoning Committee voted against restoring this neighborhood standard, and I'm gonna address one of their major complaints. The standards are very important, and I'm glad we got at least four comments. I think that, in general, the sentiments of the Hayden city residents would be strongly in favor of restoring this. And I think more people would have commented if they kind of, this is kind of a legal technical issue, but it very much affects everyone. The main concern of the Planning and Zoning Commission appeared to be that restoring the neighborhood context, which was actually the exact, similar wording that we have used in Hayden for the last five years, would be, quote, arbitrary and capricious. So, and I think that the main issue I want to address tonight is the misuse of these terms arbitrary and capricious. I believe they've been injected into this discussion, and they should not have been injected into discussion. The terms arbitrary and capricious were not taken from an actual legal case in Idaho that in any way resembles, in fact, the legal precedents in Idaho do give city councils the ability to make this type of judgment without a presumption of it being arbitrary or capricious. This, the text was taken from a law manual regarding property rights, it's written from the point of view of developers and real estateers. And in the context of it, it's trying to be threatening as though any decision that these city councilmen make could be arbitrary and capricious. So I think it was very harmful to interject that into the discussion. Those terms are, they're biased, they've been intentionally injected in order to discredit and politicize concerns about overdevelopment. They're loaded terms, and they're used to threaten anyone who might favor the interests of existing residents over developers. Why presume bias on the part of the city council members, who are charged with representing all Hayden residents? Why shouldn't the consideration of neighborhood context be considered fair and balanced, instead of arbitrary and capricious? It is perfectly appropriate for Hayden's elected officials to consider the rights of both developers and existing residents in their deliberations. Both developers and residents are landowners. Both have property rights, and both have much invested in the community. Many decisions about what is best for the community involve difficult judgments. And yes, sometimes it is a matter of weighing things. What, you know, how much development is too much? How much traffic is too much? What is neighborhood context? What are excessive public costs? These are judgments which balance the rights of old and new property owners are essential to preserving the equality of life in Hayden for all citizens, current and future. Please restore the neighborhood context standard. And I'd like to point out that for some reason, it's been changed to neighborhood contexts, and I don't fully understand the reason for that. But I would like it to be restored, neighborhood context to standard of approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Seeing no other public comment forums, at 5:50, I'm closing the hearing. And the council deliberates now. What questions may you have of Donna, or amongst ourselves?
I think Ed was going to expand on that a little bit. I'd like to hear that, too, please.
Yeah, sure. There's a couple of things here with regard to this, and as I said, we dealt with this in December, and I was discussing on it. And as has been said here, and has been said in the comments that were received, the idea here is to put back in what was in the previous standard. Maybe not exactly, but is to give the property owners an opportunity to have a voice in how the surrounding neighborhood to where they live develops. Couple of things here, and this came out, if any of you have been following, in the court tear issue going on in Coeur d'Alene with Thousand Acres and all that other stuff, and people who live over there. They also have a future land use map and a comprehensive plan, and it was brought up, and I think it's kind of salient to what is happening. When people buy their property, who knows how many, but they have the opportunity to look at the current comprehensive plan and future land use map at that time. Let's say 10 years ago. They're buying a house, and they say, let's see the, let's see what they're planning for around where we're gonna buy. And let's just hypothetically say that it shows around where they want to buy it. The future says all single-family homes. And they go, yeah, this is what we want. This is why we're moving here. So they go ahead and buy it. And then, down the road, as happens, the future land use map and comprehensive plan get changed. And all of a sudden, where they're living is possibly surrounded with higher density, who knows what? Maybe even just duplex or fourplex, but even more. What rights that those people had when they bought there, expecting that says it's gonna be single-family and the like, and then it gets changed on them. So that's one concern that I think needs more consideration. Also, Coeur d'Alene has something they call B11 in their code, and it talks about preserving existing neighborhoods. So it's not like this is something new, or various aspects of this take into consideration, what's the, what are the neighborhoods like. But with regards to the text, and I know that, yeah, it is, that is kind of vague and the like, and people say exactly the same. I would recommend entering into some type of discussion to add in their amendment to the zone text, zone map and zone text shall be consistent with neighborhood context within 500 feet of the project. And then, in a note, which we see often under codes, add a note, basically, an example. Zone develop an agreement to consider density, dwelling units per acre, and type of existing neighborhoods within 500 feet of proposed. So example, if you have, based in existing neighborhood of single-family homes, and the proposal is for, who knows what, fourplexes, or something that is, and it's usually dense, more dense, that that's able to be looked at, that they, you know, people can look at, well, what is the existing neighborhood within 500 feet? And then, what is this proposal? Is it, is it going to fit? Or are these people who bought expecting single-family now gonna have who knows what next to them that really doesn't fit within what they bought and were probably expecting, if they did look at the future land use map to see? So those are just kind of three points that I think should be kind of considered as we enter into this discussion. Thank you.
Then, council questions or comments?
I'd like to make a comment that Councilmember DePree brought up. He made a statement about preserving existing neighborhoods. I like that. I like that term. To me, that's more definitive than neighborhood context, unless there's a definition. But was that something that, is that easily identified? What is, how do you preserve existing neighborhoods? I mean, do you put a 500 feet from that neighborhood that you need to only have that type of single-family home or whatever? But I do, I do like the idea of trying to work on something with, that we are preserving, because that's what I hear about from folks that, oh, they're gonna put up an apartment, or a duplex or triplex, next to all single-family homes, and they don't like people looking into their backyard or whatever. I mean, I kind of like that idea, or that term, preserving existing neighborhoods. I mean, I kind of like that idea or that term, preserving existing neighborhoods.
Councilmembers White or Satterfield, comments?
I was fine with consistent with neighborhood context. I would take the S off. I would just say neighborhood context, not contexts. I was fine with that.
Counselmember Satterfield.
I like this because it's not too specific, and I think that gives council a broader discretion to taking a lot of things into account. Ed had brought up 500 feet. What about the person that lives a quarter of a mile down the street that's impacted by the traffic? So I like it. It's simple, but yet it gives us lots of discretion to go in any direction.
I have a comment, and I may have to ask our council to help me out on this. I felt that, I believe that all of council is in favor of the concept of what we're working with here. I did think that, listening to the Planning and Zoning Commission's deliberations, that they brought up a fair point about trying to somewhat further define what may be considered the neighborhood context. I believe that if we make any changes, such as Mr. De Priest suggested, that we make notes, that we include notes in the code, does that not require essentially going back through our process again?
I think, yes.
It would. Okay.
The amendment has been presented to you in those remarks.
Okay. All right. I would only ask council to consider, I understand where everybody's coming from, and I think we are all generally on the same page. But I thought that Planning and zoning's comments bear some weight on trying to be somewhat more specific. Counselmember De Priest.
Yeah, thank you. And I agree. I don't think this is something that needs to really be done tonight, as if, you know, need to follow the process to go back. I do believe that the Planning Commission, when they see a more specific definition that we can come up with, with the likes, and possible notes with examples, that this is something that can be worked. But the main thing is that, in the end, we come up with something that meets the premise of what we're trying to do here, but it's also to the point where, you know, people aren't going to be saying, well, that's pretty vague. What do you mean? I think there does need to be a fairly precise parameters set on how you define or evaluate what exactly does that mean, neighborhood context? So I mean, it's something, if tonight, we could do what we need to do to send it back for planning's consideration.
Well, and I appreciate your comments on that. I would also bring council back to Mr. Satterfield's comment that having this broadly allows us a little bit more discretion. Counselmember White.
I would suggest that we accept this tonight, and then, since it has to go through the process again to revisit it, that we revisit it, but at least have this in place for now.
Counselmember De Priest.
If we accept this, it does not need to go back through the process, correct?
Correct.
As it is here, it would then not need to go back. Because we're accepting it as it is, and they've already dealt with this. If we are going to, if I'm correct, if we are going to make any changes or definitions or parameters to it, then it needs to go back through the process.
I believe, if I may paraphrase Counselmember White, if we accept this tonight, we have it on the books, and we have the opportunity then to redefine or more greatly define the neighborhood context, should we like to. Because if we make the changes that you're suggesting, right now, we have to go through the entire process again anyway. Did I correctly?
Yes.
Okay. So how do we initiate the additional process, then?
Well, I believe, Eric, you can help me out here. I believe the way we do this is that council would approve it tonight, and then we would ask staff, based on the comments that we have tonight, to propose an amendment to what would then be the new city code.
Which would go to planning?
Would go back through planning and then back, which it's going to have to anyway. And in fairness to staff, they have asked for input on us, on council and planning and zoning, redefining this, and they have really not had a lot of success with any of us, me included, doing this. But that may be a workable situation.
Yeah, I'm fine with, you know, with that, but I think we do need to refine it a bit, or we're going to open ourselves up to a lot of the vagueness of it or the subjectivity of it, things like that.
Mr. Roder, comments?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a question for legal counsel. What the P&amp;Z board came up with is they were concerned about it being arbitrary and capricious. And I know that we hear that quite often from Fonda, who normally is here, about decisions that we make, that we have to be very clear on standards of approval and following those. So my question is, looking at neighborhood, consistent with the neighborhood context, how much, if you can answer this, how arbitrary and capricious in applying that, can that be a valid challenge using that term?
Well--
I mean, we're talking about it being vague enough. The problem is it's too vague, and that will just be challenged on it because it's-- I'm looking for some guidance on whether that term holds enough strength for what we want to do.
So you have deliberated a lot about defining it further, which lends to the idea that it isn't on its own, like self-defining. And so it does sound like something you would see in a comprehensive plan, which is more policy, versus the zoning map, which is zoning and more specific. But the idea of arbitrary and capricious is that there's no standard, that one citizen comes, and if this letter E is part of their application, and you can govern through the application of that, and the next time, if another citizen can come, and you do it in a way that is completely different than before. And so the idea, just the base definition there, neighborhood context, I think it's not a legal term of art, but it is somewhat self-explanatory, the neighborhood around a rezon, whether it be a specific parameter, 500 feet or something you do in the future. But otherwise, it's the neighborhood that you want to do it. And so I don't think it absolutely has to be. But if you, in one council, say that this subsection, the new E, means this, means something like 500 feet, and then the next time someone comes in, and they're within 400 feet, and you say, well, you're too far away, then that would be arbitrary and capricious because you're using different standards. And so it doesn't have a standard built into it, but it may not need to be. That's something you guys are going to have to deliberate on. As Counselmember Satterfield said, there's some discretion there because it is somewhat of an intuitive term, what a neighborhood is.
So I know that, so is this a safe, is this a safe amendment? In other words, we have some strength in applying this without challenges that would possibly prevent us from using it? I guess that's, I'm just looking for your opinion on how strong this is legally for us.
I'd probably never answer that question in a permanent--
I know. Fonda's in the question.
But again, it strikes me as being a bit of policy, and it isn't defined, but you already have that. I see some of that already in A, B, C, and D anyway. And every application is going to have a neighborhood and a context that it comes in. And so by saying it, you might just be repeating what you already are doing and making it more specific, or you may be adding to what your staff is going to start to present to you as far as information.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel. Yes, Counselmember White.
Thank you. So, correct me if I'm wrong. I guess I'd address this to Donna. This is the same wording that existed before in previous codes. So we took it from an existing sentence, right?
It was previously a question, and we made sentences.
Okay.
The previous code said neighborhood context. But again, trying to recognize the fact that neighborhood context is throughout your comprehensive plan, and trying to recognize that your future growth may be different than your existing area. We wanted to give this neighborhood context, both the neighborhood context that exists today, as well as the neighborhood context that may exist three years from now or further in the future. So that's why the S was added to the end.
Okay.
To try to recognize both those things that are in your zoning today, your zone map, existing zone, as well as what exists today in your comprehensive plan, and not have you being in opposition of any one of the standards.
So how long did we have that in our code?
Couldn't answer that question.
Okay, so it was a long time. So we've had this before. Okay, that's all I wanted to say.
Follow-up question, if I may. So Donna, thank you. So we've had it for how many years? Did we ever have a challenge on it being arbitrary and capricious when we applied it?
Yes, we have. We have had appeals that came forward that appealed how it was, how the standards of approval had been previously applied.
Do you remember how, were they successful?
I can't say for sure.
I think that'd be good to look at, to know how, not tonight, but it would be good feedback for future to know.
I see some value in having context in plural. We could have a context as far as housing structures. We could have it as a context of density, have a context of vehicles. I can see a benefit to leaving that plural.
Okay.
Counselmember De Priest.
Along with what you said, and I really think that maybe in notes or whatever, what you just said, so that, you know, these are examples of contexts, okay, that can or should be considered, because this might happen, you know, one context might not be the density, but instead be the traffic, or, you know, a myriad of potential issues that if, I believe this council was saying you apply, or somebody was saying, if one instance you said it's due to density, and then the next time you come in and say, well, it's due to traffic, some, wait a minute, you didn't, that's not in the context last time. So I think in notes, there needs to be some delineation or some indication of potential context that can be a part of consideration.
What I'm hearing from council, perhaps I'm hearing from council, is that we may have an opportunity to further define this situation at a later time, but at this point, council may be more inclined to approve it as is, and then begin to work on a slightly more refined definition.
I'll make a motion then, if that's what we're asking for. So my motion is that we would approve PZE 23002, Zone Text Amendment to the Standards of a Zone Map. And it would include the E. Could we put that slide back up so I can read that into the record, please? Thank you. It would include E, Amendment to the Zone Map. The Zone Map and Zone Text shall be consistent with the neighborhood context, plural.
Are you saying that it meets the standards of approval?
Yes.
That's why I put the slide up.
Okay, thank you.
Add that finding in there.
Second, we have a motion and a second for the Zone Text Amendment. I would just like to reinforce to council that after this, I will ask for a second motion for the, Donna, if you could help me out here, the second one is for the format changes.
The formatting change.
So we are only addressing the Zone Text Amendment. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other comments or questions from council? Hearing none, roll call, though, please, Abby.
Counselmember Satterfield?
Yes.
Counselmember White?
Yes.
Counselmember De Priest?
Yes.
And Council President Roder?
Yes. Motion passes. I would also like to ask council now if they have any comments or questions regarding the format changes. Hearing none?
Can we just take a look at them real quick?
No, I don't have them in the slide. It's not a change in the text or verbiage at all.
Okay.
Just in the format.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay. With no other comments or questions, I would like to entertain a motion from council regarding the acceptance of the proposed format changes.
Is that same PZE 23 number?
Yes, it is.
I would motion to approve PZE 23-0002, Text Amendment and Formatting Change to Existing Code Format in Title 11.
And I believe, actually, we're only doing it for the format changes at this point.
Correct.
Only for the format. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, though, please, Abby.
Counselmember White? Counselmember Satterfield?
Yes.
Counsel President Roder?
Yes.
Counselmember De Priest?
Yes. Motion passes. Moving along to item number 5A, the approval of the JUB Engineers 8687, and thank you, Donna, Sewer Basin Study Tec-Mil. Have any questions from council? Any discussion from council, observations? Counselmember White, you wished to make this a separate item from consent calendar. Do you have something to go with?
Yes, I would, personally, I would like a little more time with it because it's, you know, just brought forward to us today. I would like to look at it a little more, if possible, and postpone it to the next meeting.
Do I hear a motion in that? Would you like to make a motion on that?
Oh, motion, yes. I move that we postpone the Sewer Text Memo H6H7 Sewer Basin Study until the next meeting.
Is there a second? Hearing no, second, motion fails. Anyone else care to make a motion? Would anyone else care to have a discussion?
I'll make a motion. The motion is approval of JUB Engineers, Inc., H6H7 Sewer Basin Study Technical, Emirandam.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any council discussion or questions?
Mayor, all we're doing is accepting this study. We're not--
That's correct.
And we're just saying, the study was done. We're recognizing it was done, and we're accepting it.
That is correct. It does, however, reestablish, Alan, if you can clarify for me, I believe it reestablishes boundaries for the various sewer real stations.
Yes, you're just accepting that.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So I think as we discuss, this now becomes a part of the master plan, correct?
Correct.
So we're approving that this document become a part of the master plan?
Yes.
I think in answer to your question, more than just saying, yeah, we've--
Do we need that in our motion or not? Do we need that in our motion or not?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please, Abby.
Councilmember DePree?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
No.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
And Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to item number 6B. Council will recall we scratched the Appeal of Staff Decision. Item 6B, the Public Safety Citizen Group Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, do you want me to just...
Yes, sir. Mr. Boyer.
This was something that was brought up by council in a previous meeting. You wanted to have further discussion. There was a recommendation from the Public Safety Task Force that recommended that we put together a safety, a citizen safety, a public safety committee that would look at public safety issues, you know, primarily looking at sheriff issues, crime, and make recommendations to the council. And so, that came out of that Public Safety Task Force. And then, subsequent to that, there was discussion about, and I don't remember who brought it up, about maybe having just a liaison and not a task force.
Council President Roder with it.
And so, we didn't have any further discussion. And so, I'm bringing it forward if you want to have some discussion on what your preference is or give any direction to staff, if you want to wait until we have further discussions with the sheriff on how we set things up. But I just wanted to put it back on for your discussion.
Discussion amongst council members.
All right, since I brought up the, we're going to be paying about a million dollars a year for our public safety through the Cooney County Sheriff's Office. And one of the things that I've heard is the sheriff is looking for, that we need 22 deputies and we're at 10. You know, using those numbers, we're looking at probably a couple million dollars that we will be moving towards for meeting the sheriff's goal. When you start getting to those numbers, we need to be just thinking about, and this goes to this why justification to have a liaison, is we need to be starting to think about what it would cost to have our own police department. I know that there was a study done a number of years ago. I know Spirit Lake and looking at their budget's just a little north of $800,000. They're a lot smaller community than we are. But I think it's something that we need to, I don't think we need a commission on this. What I'm looking for is a possibility and is a suggestion is we have one liaison between the, with the city and with the sheriff's department, with one liaison at the sheriff's department so that as we move along and maybe discuss moving towards our own police department, we can communicate information, we can talk about how things are going, like the statistics on the crime statistics. I know we get a monthly report, but just, and ideally, it would be nice if we had somebody on city council that could maybe be that, that had that kind of communication. And that's just a suggestion. I would like somebody within the city staff or in the council to be that liaison rather than a volunteer person from the community. I think that this communication is really important. Like, one of the questions I posed the county, and I looked at, in fact, I brought the document with me, and the 2023 budget for the sheriff's department in Cooney County was around $36 million. That's the largest portion of the county budget. And I proposed to question to the sheriff through, or through the county commissioners and the auditors at Cooney County, the citizens of Hayden pay between $3 to $4 million that go towards that sheriff's fund. Now, this is in addition to the million dollars that we have now imposed as an increase on our levy. My question out of that $3 to $4 million, does any of that go to pay for sheriff deputies? It's spread out for jail and probably Marine Division and that, but they say they can't answer that question. It's that kind of question I like to know because that helps us evaluate what we may need in the future for a police department. I'm just giving you that kind of example. And we do have, maybe we've been talking about maybe an office for public safety that could be a police department. So, I'm not saying today we move towards that, but this liaison would be help in developing the ideas for the future for maybe a police department.
Councilmember White?
Yes, I'm, let's see. As far as a public safety committee goes, I don't feel the need for that right now that, I feel this needs to stay in the hands of the council. I was wondering, let's think more about the liaison and maybe think more about what that would look like and revisit it in a future meeting.
Councilmember Satterfield?
You know, being part of that committee and listening to them and stuff, they were very adamant, I don't know that that's the right word, but they wanted an actual commission to be part of the whole process because they were a big part of getting it passed. And I think to some degree, we owe it to them to have a structured commission that this is what they're going to do, have one liaison to report to council or whatever. But I do think we should have a commission of at least three to five people because they were pretty adamant about that. And I think it would also be helpful in making suggestions to council, Brett, whoever, you, mayor, during the negotiation process of what we actually want the sheriff to do now that we have this new money. They could be very helpful in helping us decide that too because it's more eyes, more ears out in the community that maybe we aren't in tune with.
Councilmember DePree? Thank you. I'm gonna, I mean, Councilman Satterfield basically beaten to it. Also, being a part of the process with the committee, I think it's very important, not only with that, but anytime that we can get as much public participation and input in almost everything we do is very important. I like, Councilmember Satterfield said two or three, find the number, a council, I agree with the liaison aspect of it, a council member be a part of the committee, commission, whatever you want to call them, as well as Councilmember Roder's suggestion about the sheriff either having a liaison, it kind of, it all intertwines together. The people who were on that committee, I guess that's what we're calling them, were very involved and very, studious comes to my mind, but I mean, they took it seriously and they're really very concerned about law enforcement in the city. And so, I really think it's important to bring a number of them into it and then along with the liaison aspect of it, I think is probably important.
What I'm hearing from council is perhaps the opportunity for a individual liaison plus a public safety commission in general. Councilmembers comment on that? Councilmember White?
Well, one part of that public safety commission was what they were tasked with was giving us information before we started our budget. So, what I'm, so one problem I have with a commission like that is that it segments the city council to where only half of the council had the information in a timely manner and the other half were left in the dark till a decision needed to be made. So, something would have to be done to mitigate that kind of a situation to where, so it wasn't a divisive kind of thing, but unifying.
I'm not suggesting that we have a commission or a committee that was set up exactly like the previous one, but what I'm hearing from council is that we may have an opportunity for both. Mr. Boyer?
I was just gonna suggest from what I'm hearing, what we called, they were a task force which had very specific parameters of what they were doing and had an ending time as well that they were supposed to do. That task force is no longer together. And so, they were suggesting to have something more permanent like one of our other committees, like the Veterans Commission or the Parks and Rec Commission. Maybe just a suggestion, you could, you could create such a commission and have, you know, say, five members on it. You could appoint one of the council members on there and that person could be the liaison too. Maybe that's, I'm just brainstorming a little bit from what I'm hearing from all of you.
I would make the recommendation, mayor, that we have a workshop on this and kind of maybe dive into it a little bit more rather than going too deep tonight and just as a suggestion.
Councilmembers, are you, Councilmember White?
I'm comfortable with that.
Satterfield?
Thank you.
Let's do that. Let's schedule workshop and discuss that in more depth. Good idea. All right. We're to the point of our city administrator reports, Brett.
All right, I'll keep it brief. Just a couple reminders that our next meeting, our normal meeting would be March 14th. And that's election voting day and this is a polling place, so we will not have our normal meeting here. And the council chose to set March 22nd at 5:30 as the next meeting and then our regular meeting on the 28th, I believe is. So, we'll have, still have two meetings, but they'll be really close together. We are, and Abby's looking at this as well. We talked about the spring newsletter and so the city usually puts out two newsletters. And so, we are trying to time the spring newsletter with getting information out about the survey and I did talk with Roy about that and he thought that was a good idea. So, just a heads up on that. There is an Association of Idaho Cities Spring Training coming up on April 17th here in Core Lane. So, if you're interested in that, let Abby know and she can get you signed up for that. I was gonna mention the State of the City happened last week. The mayor did a great job with that. A couple of you are there. I know one of you couldn't make it. Tomorrow morning, we have our employee meeting and the mayor is going to go through the State of the City again for the employees. So, you're welcome to come if you missed it last time.
I'll be there.
And you'll get breakfast as well. So, and then the last one was the March 17th meeting with the Members of Harbs. That's a discussion about dissolution of the JPA and Harbs Sewer.
Well, you said the Members of Harbs, will all of the members of, or will it just be city people involved in that?
No, it's everybody.
When is...
It's all the district and their folks, the county. No, it's going to be at the county building.
When is that?
March 17th. And so, we will have to notice that as a city meeting. All the entities will do that and then they'll open it up and you'll do your roll call. So, yeah, everybody will be there. I believe Ben is going to kind of moderate that. We'll present some information at the beginning. Danielle will be there to talk about the debt issues associated with maybe doing that. So, anyways, just a reminder, hold that on your calendar. It's set for 8:00, 8:00 a.m.
At the courthouse, basically?
No, in their meeting room downstairs, that big meeting room.
At that county government way down there.
Where the KCRCC meets.
Right, yeah, just in the first floor of where the KCRCC meets.
Yeah, same. Call that the courthouse.
Which is very close.
All right.
So, yeah, that's, that's it.
Great, thank you. Are there any items to be brought up for roundtable, councilmembers?
No. I got, oh, I mean, I got...
Yeah.
Just a clarification, Brett, you were saying that in the spring newsletter, there'll be information about the survey, hoping that we could have the survey in the newsletter.
Actually haven't in.
Is that what you...
Well, we haven't, we haven't got to that part yet. I'll talk with him and see if he thinks that's a good idea before we do that. We had some suggestions on how to do it, so we had a paper copy for people that don't like to use computers.
My vote is, I love, I think we should do that. We should have the survey in the newsletter since it goes out to everybody in the city that's in our mailing list and I don't know that most people...
I just, I don't know how long it is and it might, what we were talking about is offering initially, because we haven't had this full discussion on how to do it. We were more starting on the parameters of the questions and things like that. We were generally talking about having in there the information that we are doing a survey, what it's about, and how you can access it. And you can, you can get a paper copy by doing this or you can, there'll be a QR code. You can hit the QR code. And then, we also talked about mailing it out to everyone on our utility list, actually trying to email it out. And so, I'm still trying to find out how many out of that number have their emails in our utility system. So, we're still working through that, but we're trying to be very, very exhaustive, give as much feedback without having duplication from people.
One last thing. I know we want to go. And this has to do with the proposal of having a commercial air terminal out at the Pappy Boyington's Airport. We had an author here, Mike, I forget his last name, he's my neighbor, and he has a hangar out there and he spoke.
Kincaid.
Kincaid, very good, thank you. Anyway, my concern is this, is that we need to maybe take a look at the navigation easement that we give out or we allow, the airport's always asking that we provide an navigation easement for a development. Now, the navigation easements for currently in the last 20 years, whatever, doesn't have commercial jets coming in. And my understanding, if we have commercial service, we're gonna have commercial jets flying overhead. And I don't believe that, I'm concerned that we would not modify, we'd have to modify that easement to allow commercial jets to fly over Hayden and I don't want it. My neighbors don't want it. So, I'm concerned about what impact that commercial jets will have on the citizens of Hayden and also how that relates to any navigation easement that we allow.
We may want to bring this up as a separate discussion.
Sure.
Topic at a future meeting rather than, like, and this is a hot button for many councilmembers, so perhaps, perhaps we could stay this discussion. Councilmember White?
Yes, as I stated earlier in our workshop, I would really, I really feel the urgency that we set some kind of a workshop where we discuss the future land use map and how the mixed use along Hayden Government Way and I-95 affects the future as those streets are smaller and now with urban renewal wanting to move that way, we need to have a plan in place. So, I think it's serious that we need to take the time and look at the future land use map.
I believe that subject was, was part of the workshop that we had earlier tonight.
Yes, it was.
That we'll look at that.
Thank you.
Maybe I'd report on going back to the airport board and maybe to describe what they're doing as far as the commercial traffic, at least with the county is kind of like a reset. They're kind of stepping back and the group is kind of going to come back, reapproach and look at different issues and go back to the county and present it. I think they're gonna do a presentation to the county commissioners and kind of start over, but I did hear when we were at the chamber meeting, chamber mission, they were going to have a discussion on it. It might be next week or the following week, kind of a lunch and learn on it. I don't know who's putting it on. I don't, I hadn't heard anything until, until that came up. But as far as the county, those that will make, you know, that official decision, it's a kind of a, kind of a reset, let's start over. it's a kind of a, kind of a reset, let's start over and look at this. And so there'll be a lot of time to be able to consider, look at it, look at issues like what you brought up.
All right, with no more roundtables, here a motion for adjournment?
Still moving.
All right, we stand adjourned. Thanks for coming in, ladies and gentlemen.